Providing city services to outside city property. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, good evening. If I could get some conversation along these lines to you from our Public Services Director, the basic idea is kind of the part two of the steps we need to take as it relates to creating the formal understanding with those who live outside of our community and desire to receive utilities and so forth, and understanding that indeed annexation would be a part of that understanding at Council's discretion. That's fundamentally the end game. But if I could turn some time over to Andrew to kind of walk us through some more of the details, that would be helpful.
Mayor, Council, you guys did pass a resolution back in 2019. It provided us some guidelines. This revised resolution really tightens up those stipulations, and it's probably something you should be aware of if you support this or not, because some of these will become very problematic for allowing any water and sewer extension unless you happen to be immediately adjacent to an existing city water main or city sewer main. And probably the one of the most onerous for an outside customer is requirement 2F in the draft resolution, which simply states that needed water and sewer mains will need to be extended to and through the person's property line. Now, unless you understand what "to" and "through" means, you may not understand what those ramifications are, but if the water main is going down the street and you happen to have a lot that's, say, two blocks away, and you want to tie in, we have allowed in the past a service line to tap into our water main, and we've put a curb stop right there, and then they run a service line that 400, 500 feet to serve their property. Under this requirement, they would be required to extend that water main, not a service line, a water main, to and through their property line. So it really limits the ability for an outside customer to tie in to a water or sewer main unless they're immediately adjacent to it, unless they really have deep pockets and are willing to extend those types of services. To extend a water main is roughly $300 a foot, so you can see that cost rises very drastically the further you are away, and a sewer main is probably about $200 a foot. So these costs can escalate very quickly if you're a long ways away from existing city infrastructure if you're required to extend these types of services. The others are cleaning up. You would be required to plat your property to bring it into the city, and I think some of the others are very similar to what you did approve almost a year ago. But the most critical one is the fact that if you want to tie in, you're going to tie in to a main, and it's going to have to be immediately adjacent to your property. And for that to happen, you have to extend that water and/or sewer main to and through your property line. But that is really the biggest change that this addresses, and it's really a policy decision if Council wants to support that or not.
Mr. Mayor, so the purpose of bringing this up to you tonight was to give you the heads up that the second part of this is coming up, and that if indeed you had other questions or other concerns about this as a policy approach, albeit a continuation of the initial decision that you've made along these lines, tonight would be your opportunity to ask us questions, have us do more homework or whatever, but indeed, in order for this to come into the full effect that we are looking for, we will need to take that second step if Council so desires.
Okay. Councilman Muppa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Andrew, am I understanding then that we've had situations where people have basically extended a single line to their house 400, 500 yards away, then other property owners want to also build in the area, and they cannot hook into it because it's not of sufficient size, and then we have to tear it up and put a main in?
Mayor, Council, they can't, we don't allow people to tie into other people's service lines to provide service. They have to tie in to a water main and/or a sewer main. So another property may go, well, they ran a service line 1,000 feet. I want to also run a service line 1,000 feet and provide service to my property. And so instead of a water main getting extended so that we can provide service to all the adjacent property owners, individual properties are coming to us and saying, hey, you let him do it, why won't you let me do it? And from a public services perspective, the city's responsibility ends at the curb stop. So we tap the main, that curb stop goes right off the main, and then from that curb stop, that 1,000-feet service line to that person's property is their responsibility. If somebody bores through it, if somebody cuts through it, if it gets corroded and springs a leak, we simply turn it off at the curb stop, and we tell them, let us know when you have it fixed, and we'll turn your water back on. And people don't completely understand that dynamic. They think when the service line goes bad, it's the city's responsibility to fix. And again, our responsibility ends at the curb stop. And for a sewer service, that sewer service all the way from the main is the property owner's responsibility.
Thank you. Any other questions? So we don't need to go over the emergency proclamation? I mean, we can discuss it, but we don't need the resolution, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, the word that you and I received just before we came downstairs literally was that in order for us to be in line, if you will, and to reserve our space in line as it relates to getting federal dollars, we were under the impression that an emergency declaration, resolution, or proclamation needed to be passed by this body. It sounds like the state took care of that for us with regard to the declaration that they made here just a few days ago, and so it doesn't appear as though we need to impose upon you tonight to make this happen. However, there is a couple of things that I need your help with as it relates to trying to appropriately respond to the fast-moving conversation and public dialogue that we are all experiencing as public officials in trying to respond to the directives of the CDC and, you know, keeping the health and welfare of our citizens in our foresight here, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Good.
Two elements of delegation that I'd like to talk to you about tonight of authority, one of which is a pretty formal position that I would like the Council to consider as it relates to going through the development of the Emergency Operations Center that we actually have standing up and working and operating right now as of just a couple of days ago. The delegation of authority that I'm looking for is with regard to your blessing that allows for a more fluid decision-making process as it relates to city resources, mostly in the form of people and equipment, to support the EOC. Right now, just to kind of give you a feel for what's going on, we have allocated eight firefighters and a couple of police officers with their equipment and vehicles to be used as the EOC has needed help with. I suspect that as time moves forward, and perhaps the situation with regard to managing the pandemic gets more complicated, we will likely need to dedicate more resources, the resources of which, I should tell you, are not only being supported by the City of Casper, but also by the county. We actually have the town of Evansville, who have thrown in a couple of employees. The Health Department has thrown in an employee, and that could grow. It might actually engage more agencies as well. What I need from the Council, if the Council sees fit, is what they call a delegation of authority type letter that allows for myself, as your City Manager, in cooperation with your mayor, to be on the contact list, I guess you'd say, for the EOC to reach out to when decisions need to be made that might require additional city resources, possibly over and above what we've already dedicated, in the form of what I just described. The idea is that that would not require them to come back to the full legislative body as a whole in each of the participating agencies in order to make decisions and in order to get access to resources. And so my hope is that, you know, we can keep the use of the city's resources to a minimum, but if we can't, the idea is that we would seek recompense for whatever resources we use, whether it's eight firefighters and two police officers, or 10 firefighters and 10 police officers, and so on. That letter of authority, however, allows us some real important maneuverability as it relates to the operations of the Emergency Operations Center and the Incident Command structure, and again, gives us our foot in the door to hopefully get those resources reimbursed. Mr. Mayor, did I miss anything from what you and I have heard?
Nope. Just, I guess to sum it up, basically it gives the authority to the Emergency Operations Center, Emergency Management, to make decisions on the resources that if they need to take test kits to Cheyenne in the middle of the night or pick them up, that they don't need to come back to us and ask if that's okay. We're going to expend that money for the employee, if they're using our employee in our vehicle, we're going to let them just do it, and, you know, because we're not going to wake everybody up at midnight and say, hey, are we good with this? We're going to just let them do it. And so that's what, basically, this is going to do, is give them the authority to do so.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Doesn't Section 2 of the proclamation really do what you're asking for, by the way I read it?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, we do think that there is some legislative authority as it relates to that, but in terms of what we need by way of incident response and so forth, the command structure does require some delegation of authority by the participating agencies and their legislative body. And so what we're hoping is to dot that i and cross that t so that we wouldn't be open for criticism from FEMA, for example, if we hadn't done that and we're standing in line for some resources and recompense.
As a follow-up, that was why I was asking, is if, in the process of trying to document and dot and all of that, if we shouldn't go ahead and pass this resolution or proclamation tonight, and that's why I was asking if Section 2, and particularly Paragraph B, where it says, "I delegate the City Manager General Authority to permit use, closure, blah, 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 blah," if you'll pardon the blah-blahs, but if that isn't really, in essence, what you're looking for.
Let me add to that. So first of all, this paper that you have in front of you is, initially, when we put this together, the steps that we were going to take was the city would basically declare that, you know, this is beyond the scope of what we can handle, so we're asking the county to help us. And then the county would take it and turn it to the state, and then the state would go to FEMA. That's the progression of how this works. However, Governor Gordon has already declared it to be a state of emergency for the entire state of Wyoming, so that makes this null and void. We really don't even need to look at this tonight because this has already been passed by the governor. But through the Emergency Operations Protocol itself, there is a declaration in there that would allow, that allows us as a body to give authority to the Emergency Operations Center to go ahead and make those decisions, and keeping us in the loop, obviously, what they're doing, but make those decisions no matter when it is, and no matter how big this event gets. It gives them that authority to do so while keeping us in the loop as to what we're expending and what equipment we're using and whatnot. So I guess we could put this down, because this is done, this has already been done by the governor, so this was only going to be started by us tonight, except for the fact that we've already, this step's been taken care of, care for us by Governor Gordon, so.
Okay.
Councilman Heber.
My only question about this is, do you guys have a proposed resolution that we can introduce tonight and pass to accomplish that? Or do we just need to wordsmith that on the fly here tonight to do that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I think the resolution isn't necessary. I think if you're willing to give the thumbs up as it relates to signing off on a letter of delegation and that authority, delegation of authority, I should say, that should be all we need.
Well, what I'm concerned about is that, is there any reason that there needs to be a formal resolution by the Council voted upon in an open meeting as opposed to just a general thumbs up? I think that, you know, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I can't imagine that anybody's going to oppose this. But what I'm worried about is, you know, in terms of crossing t's, dotting i's, that kind of stuff, if we shouldn't do that in the form of a formal resolution voted on in an open meeting and doing that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I think, I see where you're going, Councilman, and I appreciate that, because I think if we could substitute the term "resolution" for perhaps "minute action" tonight, that could probably get us to where we need to be in terms of the transparency that you're looking for on the open.
I'm not only concerned about transparency, I'm concerned about giving you and the other department heads all of the authority and the power that I think that you need to deal with this and having it just be absolutely crystal clear that it was an action of the Council enacting that, and I'm wondering, and Mr. Henley could talk about this if he wants, if it wouldn't be best, just to shoot through all that preliminary stuff and go straight to a formal resolution and do that tonight.
Can I add, and just a question, I guess, is that the declaration comes out of the Emergency Operations Plan, which is, has been adopted by the city from the county itself. So we've already adopted the plan and everything within it. So all we're doing is filling out a declaration form, delegating authority to the Emergency Operations Center out of a plan that we've already adopted. So I guess that's my question, if we've already adopted it, can we not fill out the form without having to go through the formality of a resolution or a minute action?
Well, just by way of background, there was a meeting today at 3:00, and I tell you, I was listening in on the phone, and I couldn't hear at all, but it sounded to me like there was this procedure that people there in the room, and this was out at Fort Casper, felt comfortable with. I don't know that it hurts to have an authorization from Council in its open meeting when you're actually there. It may not be necessary, but I don't see that it would do any particular harm either, unless we just don't have the facts to do it right now that you need to do. I know you guys are going to have a conference tomorrow, I think, with the county and some of the other municipalities early on, and if we need those facts and that type of information before we do it, there's no reason to do it twice either. So I guess I would leave that up to you, because I don't know about that.
Mr. Mayor, I think the minute action tonight would punctuate what it is that the Council intends to allow, and I would also include that yourself would be included in that delegated authority on the body's behalf as well.
Okay. Councilman Pacheco.
Right, and I think, I think we get, again, the mayor said this, we're covered through the emergency declaration by the governor, and so I understand that, and I think, and I support a minute action for us to go through that instead of a resolution, and I think Mr. Henley would back that as well. So I think we, I mean, I think we're trying to get this to be too muddled, I think. So I think if we were safe and we're covered by the declaration of emergency by the governor, am I correct in saying, am I correct in that? So that we would be transparent with the authority to do that and not having to create a resolution formed by our body, correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, we really have the luxury of a double layer here. You've got the resolution that the governor passed, and the mayor is correct, you also have the added layer of adopting the original EOP with the county that covers these kinds of questions in a lot of ways. And so I think if you do take the extra effort tonight to pass a minute action item, reemphasizing that letter of delegation of authority, I can't see where any of your bases wouldn't be covered, probably more than once.
But we're being more than transparent.
Oh, I think so.
Okay, so I'm comfortable with that, and I think we're good in that sense. So I'm supportive of it.
Okay, so we do a minute action then during the meeting? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. And you're going to tell me where to put that in at? All right. Did we have anything else on that portion of it there?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I do.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Bates.
Just double checking. So throughout the years, we've had the anthrax issue, throughout the years, we had the swine flu, we've had the West Nile virus. Have we done this prior that we've already done this, so it's already been approved from way back then, that we're just duplicating? I'm just asking, I don't know, I just know that throughout the years, there's always been something right around election time that something like this has come up and has been severe. So I'm just asking if we've already, if prior Council has already made something like this, and you already do have that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Bates, what I can say is, this step in the process of that delegation of authority is a very, very common piece of the Incident Command structure, and the typical things that the feds look for as it relates to general emergency response. What I can't say, and maybe Mayor Freel, you'd have a better feel than I would, is what exactly has happened during those incidences here in our community in the past, given that I wasn't here back in those particular situations. So I couldn't answer that specifically, but what I can say is that this is a very common piece of an Incident Command Response Protocol.
And I guess maybe to add on to that, because I think I know what you're asking is, if we've done it in the past, I can't tell you per incident exactly, but there's a protocol they follow, but that doesn't carry over from one event to the next. So just because we did a delegation of authority back when, you know, West Nile or any of those that you just said took place in the community, that doesn't carry over to the next disease that comes through or the next incident that happens. Each of these are individual incidents, you have to start at ground zero, you have to go through the entire process, and so this is just, we're going through the process.
That's what I was wondering, is if that carried, so.
Okay. Anybody else have questions on any of that? All right. And then I think that the other thing we wanted to put out was the fact that we have met as leadership from all agencies that are involved with this incident that's taken place, so leadership from the City of Casper, Barnum, Mills, Evansville, Wyoming Medical Center, there's a team in place, the school district, CDC, or the Trona County Health Department, Dr. Dow, and I'd butcher the other doctor's name, but, so there's a leadership team. We have ongoing meetings, and every morning now at 9:00 AM we'll be having those meetings to be updated on what's going on and make decisions as a leadership group that will filter down. That was kind of a missing piece, it seems, to where decisions were being made, but we were making them in groups, not as a collective group, and I think that's been ironed out after today, and I think things are going to run really smooth from here, so, and then I guess we'll have more to put out here at the end, so. Do you have something you want to add?
Mr. Mayor, the only other thing I need to visit with the Council briefly about is with regard to some of the fluid responses that are being expected of the city to take in between the times that we all get together and meet. One of the things that I really need to evaluate here over the next few days is ways in which touchpoints with the community is reduced or changed so that we are protecting, you know, the environmental health of our facilities, as well as the health of those who come to do business with the city. It certainly is my plan that indeed, all the business, as much as possible of the public, will continue despite the level of severity that we might find ourselves in in the next few weeks or months. However, we are finding that we are needing to adjust very rapidly the means by which we interact with that business of the public. And so I guess the other thing that I'd really like you to consider is allowing that flexibility to be had at the staff level with regard to evaluating those, like I said, those touchpoints, the means by which we conduct this business. As you know, we're having to curtail businesses in the form of the rec center. Today, we dealt with Hogadon in a pretty direct way. I don't see that really changing much, and in fact, it's probably going to get more and more hampered as we go along, but I don't want to go along feeling like I'm getting ahead of you, but rather moving in accord with regard to what hopefully you would expect me to do. And so I just want to clarify that tonight, if that's at all possible.
In that regard, would some kind of a resolution or rec, from the Council, the Council could be?
I think if, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I can get your blessing in the form of a minute action tonight, that would be helpful, if that's amenable to you.
So you want to do it?
Good. Councilman Muppa.
Thank you, Carter, and you guys are doing excellent work in a tough situation. I guess I'd just like to point out that as the City Manager, you have full authority to do these things whether we pass a minute action or not, and you are the employee of this Council, and we trust you to make these decisions, and I don't want you to in any way feel like you need to be looking over your shoulder and wondering whether this is approved, because we have confidence in you, and I know I speak for the entire Council, and it's much more important for you to make the decisions you need to make than to worry about whether you're following protocol or doing something that might rub one or more of us the wrong way. You are the City Manager, these are all your employees, Hogadon is your operation to run. If you decide to close it, so be it. And I believe it's a good system that we have in place, and you should feel free to do your job the way you see fit.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. Anything else?
I think that covers it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody.
Want to just go straight into our meeting then? Just a little after then. Okay, before we begin this evening, I would like to recommend everyone to silence their cell phones at this time. We'd like to thank everyone for your patience and assistance in meeting the new guidelines of social distancing. We request that people in attendance leave after their item of business has been resolved and watch the rest of the meeting either in the lobby of City Hall on Channel 192 or via YouTube. We have links to archived meeting videos on our webpage, and we'll have the links to tonight's video posted in the next day or two. Also, we encourage people to let us contact them via phone rather than requiring everyone to address Council in person. We'll be placing calls to citizens that have been in contact with us, and the public comment phone number is area code 307-235-8215. I now call the March 17, 2020 regular Council meeting to order. Could Council members please denote your presence by depressing your yes switch?
All Council members are present.
Council members, our Council meetings are televised and can be viewed on Cable Channel 192. Please join, is there anybody who wants to lead us in a pledge of allegiance? Please join, is there anybody who wants to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the March 3rd, 2020 regular council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on March 13th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, second by Councilman Cathy. Any amendments? Okay, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the March 3rd, 2020 executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, second by Councilman Johnson. Any amendments? Okay, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the March 17th, 2020 bills and claims as audited by city manager Napier.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Hopkins. Any abstentions? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Bright spots in our community. Uh, the council, Casper's Council for People with Disabilities was formed last July and has been actively working on its mission ever since. Primary goal of this group is public awareness regarding the services available locally and throughout Wyoming for those with disabilities. In lieu of hearing from the committee in person, I would like to read what the CCPD chairperson, Austin Berlin, shared with us about the committee's recent activities. Casper's Council for People with Disabilities had, held the first annual Disability Awareness Day celebration on March 7th, 2020 at the Ram Cota. A great keynote was given by Laurel Henry of Vision Outreach Services and 18 organizations who provide services to empower people with disabilities in our community also participated. Approximately 100 people attended. The Casper Council for People with Disabilities appreciates the city council's support of their efforts. They also expect to participate in the parade this summer. If you would like to learn more about the celebration, please visit the Facebook page at Casper Disability Council. Move on to communications from persons present. Now is the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the, first page of the agenda, we ask the following: Please state your name and address. Direct all questions, comments to the mayor, and the mayor only. No personal attacks on staff or council will be tolerated. Council will not respond to personnel matters, these will be referred to the city manager. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by council members, and presentations will be limited to five minutes, and the duplication of speakers will not be allowed, nor will time extensions be permitted. Is there anybody who would like to speak to council?
My name is Linda Bergeron, I live at 2355 South Larkspur, and I am speaking tonight about, uh, in the resolutions, uh, item 11B, number two, about the Paradise Valley, um, road to Robertson Road to the trails and the bridge that's being proposed. Um, I'm opposed to that. For one thing, I don't see how, uh, the traffic on Indian Paintbrush can handle that. It's already pretty, um, congested when there's cars on both sides and traffic going both ways, and those bike trails take up quite a bit of room, actually. And another thing is, uh, in the 2020 legislative session that we just, um, went through, um, there were a tremendous amount of tax bills, and taxes were imposed upon people, and I see this, um, as you're spending and then taxing. And so I'm very concerned with, in light of what we just heard, um, and, um, our city manager said that, uh, business operations have been curtailed, and it will probably in the future tend to curtail more businesses because of precautions that are being taken. So my concern is spending more money, and the area that it's going into, we live down in that area, and the winds are high, and we have constant, uh, blowing snow, you can, you can shovel, and the snow comes right back. And so I don't see it as a very good place, uh, for a bike path or a walking path. So those are my concerns, and I'd ask you all to consider them.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Johnson.
I guess I'm, because I was contacted about this too, and I'm, I'm confused, I thought this was along Robertson Road, not Indian Paintbrush.
Well, my understanding is there's, they're building a bridge to go over the river from Robertson Road, then they're going through the lagoons, the old, um, sewage treatment, then they're, uh, going across a street, uh, can't remember the name of it exactly, but, uh, across a little bit of a street, and then on Indian Paintbrush. Now...
I mean, I don't have a map here, so I have no idea where it's, where it's going exactly, but...
So, do you have, do you have...
Yarrow.
If I may. Ms. Bergeron is correct that the trail would start at Paradise Valley Park, where it ends right now, travel down Riverside Drive, take a left at Indian Paintbrush, and then up to the old sewage lagoon, so, uh, and then a bridge across. And, and, and there are concerns about Indian Paintbrush and this, and its ability to manage that, but, um, but of course, this is being done by the trust, not by the city.
And the, the other question I had is, is this gonna negatively affect parking and people's access to their driveways? Was the other question that was asked of me.
City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. The, uh, the idea with respect to what it is that we're asking for this evening would be to go through the design phase of this project so that indeed, some of these questions can be mitigated and dealt with, uh, as it relates to putting forward a plan that would ultimately result in construction if, of course, council approves what it is that the trust is proposing. So, uh, the hope is that with the right design, we, we'd be able to deal with, with these kinds of concerns and questions.
Thank you.
Yes, I would like to, yeah, we can. Good evening.
He's around, 542 South Durbin. I came in person tonight because I expected the press to be here, and I'll talk about that at the very end, what I have a suggestion for. But first, I think we need to take a step back and take the virus situation in perspective. We have about 1.25 million people are killed in car accidents worldwide every year, 37,000 are killed in the US every year. When there's a car accident, someone gets killed on CY Avenue, we don't close down all the roads in the Ca- city of Casper. I think some of the things we're proposing, or people are talking about, are just over the top. I think it's one of these things that was a lifestyle issue, they're gonna have to get used to the fact that we may have 100, 200,000 or 300,000 people getting killed by the virus every so many years, a pandemic is gonna come up, and then we're gonna have a lot of people get killed, and we're just gonna have to get used to this. The second thing regarding this is I was talking to some of my doctor friends over the weekend, they believe that more people will get killed by high anxiety issues, depression issues that have a negative impact on people's health, that actually more people will be killed by our actions we are taking than the virus itself. The third thing is, the virus is, does not cause many of these deaths, they're saying. It, for example, it's an extreme example, but let's say someone tested positive, walked across the street and got killed in a car accident, on the updating sheet, it would say deceased, but he wasn't killed by the, by the disease, was killed by the car. Many of these people are dying from diseases that they already had or issues they already had. It was not the virus itself that caused death. It's really the wording of, this comes from the CDC, is the people who test positive who are now deceased, doesn't mean that they were caused by them. Uh, and I think before the city takes drastic action, like, you know, quarantines, like they do in San Francisco, or in New York City, is I understand they're thinking of talking, uh, that you can only stay in your homes and you can't go out, I think we should take the reverse to a certain degree. We should encourage people to shop locally, especially of our local businesses. If you wanna buy clothes, you know, if you wanna buy new shoes for the kids, especially for the local businesses, we want to stimulate the economy, not go the other way. And the, the last reason, and the reason really why I'm here, and the reason why I came as opposed to sending emails, which I always do, is I saw something that was extremely appalling in Walmart today. First one is a person actually sneezed, just sort of bent over, but sneezed all over the place. If they would've done that in someplace like New York City, they would've gotten beat up, because the people now in New York who sneeze in public, as I understand from friends, they just punch you out. I'm not advocating people to punch people out in the public here, but I'm advocating the press and the city council to have some type of outreach to educate these people. You do not sneeze in public. You do not sneeze even in your home if you have family members. You do not cough. A lot of people are coughing in their hand in Walmart. You don't cough into your hand, you cough into your elbow, you cough into a tissue. So if we do get hit by a coronavirus, and for people here in the city, it is going to spread like wildfire, because the people here have a terrible, terrible, terrible approach to hygiene. You do not. And the press, I don't know if they've been advocating what they should be doing, but the Tribune needs to put a full-page thing in the paper with pictures of how you put your hand here, you don't put your hand here. And if, and the press that's here of the, right now, they need to do something on the news also, to teach these people how to do that. Like I said, in New York City, and also where in Palm Beach and Florida, if you would've sneezed, you would've been attacked. I'm not advocating people get attacking people who do not apply proper hygiene, but I do advocate that the city council and the members of the press make an outreach immediately tonight to tell people what to do and not do. You do not cough into your hand, you cough into your elbow, you cough into tissues that you dispose of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lowenda Allison, and I live at 2451 South Yarrow, and I am concerned about the bridge, um, bikeway, as well as myself, um, as it affects also in front of our property. I did bring in some maps and some things tonight to kind of share with you. There are some things, how it's gonna shrink down Indian Paintbrush, as you see, and also, um, how it's going to affect that traffic in that area, because it already is a very skinny area, so we are kind of worried about the parking area and the situation. I live right here behind, um, uh, Fyaro. I wanna know how it's, I live in county, and where my fence line is, is where county starts, and it goes into city. I wanna know how that's gonna affect the traffic down there for us private people that all do live down there in that quiet neighborhood. So, I just had to kind of share this with you guys and see how that's gonna affect us in the future.
Councilman, Senator Bates, Mayor Lewis.
The nice thing is, and I'll just let you know, that way you can kind of keep in touch with us and follow along, what the funds today are going for are the plans of that, and so obviously, just keep in touch with us as far as watching what happens and keep in touch with the trust, because I'm assuming that usually those engineering plans tended like project things, you know, along the sense of like traffic or expected increases, decreases, and so those plans should give us those numbers.
Okay. Um, another thing is, why was this area not contacted that this was gonna be moved forward or this, that this was gonna come through, and then that we just accidentally found out about it?
Mr. City Manager.
Sorry.
No, don't be sorry. These are good questions. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, I, I do concur that public outreach and public input is a very critical part of this design and planning process. Um, we will absolutely encourage the trust to make that a vital part of this design process if council sees fit for this to be approved this evening. I think that the neighbors have legitimate concerns, I think, um, uh, the appropriate planning is, is, is critical for this discussion, and ultimate construction, again, if it, if it passes muster. Um, to this point, uh, no, no drawings have been completed, no plans have been, you know, memorialized. Designs still need to take place, and, and I think a, a good design involves the, the input of those who are around the project, so I, I couldn't agree more that that's an important aspect of this.
Okay. That's all I needed to know, is why, so, thanks, gentlemen.
Councilman Bates.
I should've asked this earlier to the other lady, to Ms. Linda, and I apologize I didn't. Um, I guess, are you opposed to having the bike path go in that area, or just the fact that the streets are too narrow? Um, I, I guess is my question.
It's, it's actually both. I mean, there's other options to where that bridge could go to, you know, I mean, like, there's already a, a bridge on Robertson Road that we just put a bunch of money into and, um, that you can walk along and stuff to, why can't we just go ahead and exceed with that one? And why do we have to come down on such a narrow street? I mean, I'm all for bike trails, but I just think it's in the inappropriate place because of the skinny street, and then how they're doing it, where they used to dump snow and where they used to dump, um, all their, you know, street sweepers would use to dump their stuff right there. And then I'm just, I'm just kind of curious, or not curious, I'm just kind of worried how it's gonna affect the traffic right there with that new sewer pump station anyway. And, I mean, they're nice enough that they do come out and fix the road for us once a year, because it does get, well, I mean, used with the guys going in there, and I'm just worried how it's gonna affect the traffic coming in that private little, sorry, that private little area. So, I'm, I'm all for a bike trail, I just don't think that's the right area.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Huber.
If I might, ma'am, I appreciate your concerns here, uh, and, uh, I especially kind of perked up when you said, well, why weren't the neighbors out there consulted with about this, or something like that? But it sounds to me like what's going on is that this is at, this project is at such a potent, you know, such, such a preliminary stage that it's premature to, you know, th- this is a very, uh, early-on concept idea to look at and see, is this something that might or might not ever work there or anything? And, Mr. City Manager, you could correct me if I'm wrong about that, but all of these things that you're, uh, these concerns that you're raising, I think are things that a- as this potential planning goes forward, they're all the things that they need to have input about, so that they, uh, you know, very frankly, and I'm gonna be blunt, so that it doesn't just come across as a bunch of neighbors saying, "Nimby, not in my yard, not on my street," and that. You know, because, uh, you know, none of us wanna have things that increase the traffic on our own streets, but, uh, these things that you're bringing up are all really legitimate things, and so please, monitor this and everything, but I suspicion that when you say, "Well, why weren't we notified about this in any better manner?" It's when something is at such a preliminary beginning stage, how do you even know who to, to talk to? Do we talk to everyone in town? Do we talk to this, this group, when it might or might not even be close to them, or whatever? And I, and I would just offer those thoughts, but please, stay involved with this.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Summers. I live at 2441 Yarrow, and I am concerned with the price of it. If we have the coronavirus going on now, and you guys are sliding this in, this was prepared in February, which was just a few days ago, but even to have people go out and estimate the cost before anything is done, is like a million-dollar contract for the construction people to just check it out, to see where the bridges are going to go. And with the new taxes that we were just given last year, it just seems like we could put a bridge across from, uh, Yarrow, or from Dempsey Acres, across into Marad, and benefit, all of that city land that's down in that area could definitely be used and utilized for a lot of different things. And the bridge would be between the bridge that goes into Mills and the Robertson Road Bridge. We do not need another bridge a half a mile away. And I am concerned with the prices. And I hope that it doesn't slide under with this horrible virus that we have going on now. And we will keep in touch with it. But Mr. Huber, when did you first know that this was even in the beginning stages?
When it was on our packet for tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
And those are open to the public.
Thank you. We are here.
My name is Richard Staley. I live at 180 Indian Paintbrush. And I've lived in that house for 42 years. And, uh, it is a quiet neighborhood, but we do have some problems. We have people that, uh, use that, especially in mornings going to work, exceeding the speed limit. We have trouble with, uh, snow removal on that, uh, area. They used to pile it in the middle and take it out, now they just kind of smooth it out, push it up on our sidewalks as they go through there. We're limited to our parking areas, um, because the whole back of our street is against the, uh, county line. So we have no access to get into the back way of, and having a place to park. So we're, we would be limited to, you know, if they find that this street is so narrow that we can't park on our side of the street, then we're going to, uh, have problems not only with, uh, taking care of our area down there. I mean, it, it's going to devastate us. And I know that the people down there are not opposed to a bike path. There's a lot of area that can be used. And when I found out yesterday that, uh, this was, had been proposed, and I talked to a couple of the gentlemen on council, one of them told me he'd had no idea, never heard anything about it. The other one was concerned with the same concerns I had, and I appreciated his, uh, response and his, returning his phone calls to me. We need to be informed about what's going on. You know, we're not, we're not asking for somebody to say, "Hey, you want to do this without our permission?" We just want to, if I do anything at my shop, automatically, I have to inform everybody within 300 feet of my property, you know, that, uh, something that I want to do, and we have to put our plans in. Why weren't we informed of this sooner? I mean, there would be a lot more people here tonight if we had, had more time to visit with them and let them know. I mean, we never talked to anybody on Riverbend Road, and that's going to affect that street. Now that street's a lot wider, and I could see where they could possibly get by with having parking on both sides and a bike lane, but not Indian Paintbrush. You get two cars parked on each side of the street? If you're coming down the street and somebody's coming the other way, you actually have to slow down, move over, so the two cars can get by each other, right now. That's my concerns.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
So just to be clear, I think our, moving forward, we're going to advise that the trusts do a public comment section and things of that nature. Nothing was done behind the scenes. This is the first time this is being brought to the council, because it's still in the very preliminary stages. So none of this is happening tomorrow. It's not like, you know, they're going to come start digging up Indian Paintbrush tomorrow and putting in bike lanes. The good thing is, we'll advise the trust this, our council has set up, you know, a really strong public comment forum through our website and things of that nature, and we'll work in cohorts, cohorts, I guess, with the trust to make, make something like that available, so that this project moving forward, you know, there will be that opportunity for public comment and suggestion.
And the other thing was, is a lot of our property taxes in that area were raised significantly the last two years. And a lot of us did complain. Some of us were able to get our property taxes down, others not, not so fortunate. And is this going to add to, uh, our property taxes again out there?
The property taxes do not, that does not come from council, that comes from the county assessor's office.
Okay.
I talked to, yeah, I would talk to Mr. Keating.
All right.
About that issue.
Thank you.
Mayor McGinn, Carol Summers, 2441 South Yarrow. And if nobody knows about this, if Mr. Huber didn't know about it, how did we all get all of this? This has been brought up. Somebody on this council knew a lot about what is proposed going out there, but not all of you knew. So all of you are just kind of like us. You're just finding out. And I don't think that is a very comfortable way for the city manager to have performed this particular part of his duties. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, the project that we're talking about this evening, in its design phase, if you will, was originally proposed to the council during the time that the 1% process was underway. Uh, as you know, the Trails Trust is a big partner with respect to developing that part of your infrastructure, if you will. And they came forward and made a pitch to the council with regard to how they would use the 1% funds. This project was absolutely included in that original pitch, and was definitely a part of the capital agenda that the Parkway Trails Trust folks indicated would be the means and the ways by which those dollars would be used. So, uh, to, to suggest that this project wasn't vetted, at least in that very preliminary fashion, ever before now, um, is, is just simply not accurate. The Trails Trust has put this project as a part of all their communications in terms of telling folks in, in their constituencies as to how they would use the dollars as well, in that they have kind of a stewardship, if you will, with regard to the dollars that you allow them to use for, again, the development of this portion of your infrastructure. So while this is the first step that's being taken to put this project into play, um, I, I, I wouldn't agree that it's the first time that this has ever been communicated publicly. I, I would say that probably took place, oh, May, at the very latest, earliest, or whatever. And, and yet again, during the time when, uh, the contract was being discussed with 1%, uh, with the Trails Trust, again in the summer. So, um, this isn't the first time that the project has seen daylight, if you will.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, and ma'am, I, I would offer this as somewhat of an apology to you. I, uh, probably didn't as adequately explain what I meant when I said this was on the agenda, because what I meant was exactly what Mr. Napier has said. This has been something that has been on the agenda, has been discussed before. This is not something that they just, you know, that just whipped up out of nowhere. Uh, you know.
Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I may be able to shed some light on this a little bit. Going back, uh, a number of years ago, and I would say it's probably on the order of three or four, we had a landowner come to us, and after some discussions, we bought a little piece of ground on the west side of the river, which in effect would make a very good landing from what used to be the old treatment plant in Paradise Valley. That area that contained that treatment plant has about four acres. It's never been developed as anything. People are just using it for storage. And quite honestly, we'd probably prefer they didn't, but, but that's the way it is. There's about four acres on the eastern side of the bank, just directly across about 200 and some feet, uh, from where the landing for the bridge could be. So there would be adequate parking available there, there may be adequate parking on the other side. But the real problem with not having another connection with that end of town is, uh, since probably about, uh, 1990, there's been a huge number of houses that have been built on the eastern side of the river. And the only trail that those folks have is one that's, goes down, uh, beside Robertson Road.
You meant the western side.
Western side, I'm sorry. Yeah. The western side, there's, I, I would, I, I don't know that number, but I'm saying there's probably three or four or 500 homes out there now.
Well over a thousand.
Is it? Well, anyway, it's a lot of homes that have been built, and they have no trail connection other than to ride up the city streets or Robertson Road on the side of, of Paradise Valley. You got to ride up the city streets to get over to the Robertson Road Bridge to cross over. And so this is a real major connection for the trail system, and, uh, it'll, it'll put a good percentage of our population back on the trails. Right now, they end, when you get down to, I don't remember where the trail ends, but it's, it's several blocks away.
Councilman Pacheco.
Not to, not to belabor it, I, I want to, first of all, I want to come to defense for our city manager. Our city manager is one of the most upright individuals I have ever met in my life. I was mayor under him, and I worked with him. He was always upfront with me, always upfront with this council. I stand behind him, um, for what he does, and he has never, in all the years I've been on council and I've worked with him, ever tried to fight anything past us. So the insinuation that he has done something sneaky is absolutely wrong, and I, and I stand behind him as a person, I think this council does as well. He is one of the most honest men you will ever, ever meet, to a fault. Not only has he been the type of a person that has been a good person to me personally, as just as an individual in my family, he just is a good human being. He would never, ever do that. I stand behind him, and he does a wonderful job for us, and he's helped us so much in this, in this city.
Councilman Bates.
City Manager, if I'm correct, this is like a first phase, be, because you were correct that we've talked about this. We've discussed that this was going to go in, and then there's talk about, uh, connecting the trail to go to Walmart. And then there's one other one, I want to say connecting Mid, Midwest Avenue with the path, or maybe I'm mixing up the third one, but if I'm right, there's three parts to this, and this was the first phase. Am I remembering this correctly?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Bates, uh, you, you are remembering it correctly. There, there's a number of projects that the trust would like to do with their allocation of 1 cent funds as a part of the 1 cent 16 cycle, many of which you just identified. Without a doubt, the Robertson Road pedestrian bridge is one of their higher priority projects, if you will, for this tranche of funding, indeed.
Because the idea was to connect the trail going to the mountain on up into Rotary Park, but because that was put on hold, we moved to the Robertson Road and, like I said, to Walmart and so forth, where we kind of changed that, right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Bates, I, I am not, uh, remembering the, um, direction that the trust provided as it relates to the relative value of the Casper Mountain Road Trail to the Robertson Road Bridge project. Councilman Powell may be a better resource to answer that question than I, or maybe other members of the council, but I, I don't totally remember where, where the two compare in priority.
I, I think Councilman Bates is probably correct in, because the, the move, uh, south with the Casper Mountain Trail to Rotary Park basically hit some roadblocks. And so, uh, what Councilman Bates, Bates is suggesting, I believe, is more or less correct. This, this westward extension was always part of the long-range plan, but I think it just was moved up in priority because, um, it wasn't possible to move forward with that southward extension. So these are decisions all made by the board of the, of the trust, and their meetings are all open to the public as well. Um, and they were publicized as well, so, um, and, and we, and we have this happen repeatedly where it, people, it comes to someone's awareness, and it seems as though it's the first time it's ever been publicly stated, but who would expect someone to pay attention to the minutes of the Platte River Trust? And so I, I don't, but I can certainly understand when it does come to someone's awareness, it, it seems like it's just coming out of nowhere. And that's, that's really part of local decision-making, the process. So we're obviously making it more public now. It certainly was public, because the budget discussions when we allocated the 1 cent 16, um, uh, funds in that budgetary process, that was all public, all published, all discussed. But again, I wouldn't expect people to obsess about those processes unless they became aware of how it was going to affect them personally, which has recently happened here. So we will have many more public discussions about this.
Councilman Huber, did you have something?
Matter of mine.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else who would like to speak to council?
Sorry, I was just, was there anyone who called in? I know that we had said that phone number at the beginning of the meeting, I just wanted to.
Mr. Mayor, it would appear that we do not have any telephonic citizens who want to visit.
My, how the world changes, right?
Maybe text?
All right. Okay, so we'll, uh, move on to establish dates of public hearings. Please read the consent agenda titles.
Establishing April 7th, 2020, as the public hearing date for consideration of the following two items. Item 8A1, the annexation in Platte, creating the Sun Trust Number One addition to the City of Casper, Enzoni and Sed addition as R3, one to four unit residential. And item 8A1B, the creation of the local assessment district 157, Arrowhead Road and Jade Avenue roadway improvements. And establishing May 19th, 2020, as the public hearing date for consideration of the annexation compliance with Title 15, Chapter 1, Article 4 of the Wyoming State statutes of the Sun Trust Number One addition and the third reading of the ordinance.
Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute, act and establish, public hearing dates just read.
All moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, second by Councilman Kathy. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote, and please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the ocean issuance of microbrewery license number, liquor license number seven. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Your Honor, we have five exhibits. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Fleur Tremmel to J. Carter Napier dated March 3, 2000, or 2020. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication is published on the Casper Star Tribune dated March 9, 2020. Exhibit number three, affidavit of website publication is published on the City of Casper website dated March 3, 2020. Exhibit number four, affidavit of notice of conspicuous posting pursuant to Wyoming statute 12 hyphen 4 hyphen 104A, is posted at 4155 Legion Lane, Unit 4 and 6, dated March 3. is posted at 4155 Legion Lane, Units 4 and 6 dated March 3, 2020. And exhibit number five, liquor license application filed February 18, 2020.
Mr. City Manager, your report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a new business coming into the community, a new brewery, in fact. License number seven is proposed to be located at 4155 Legion Lane, Units 4 and 6. And we certainly would recommend your positive consideration.
Okay, council will now listen to public comment. Public comment, or hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I do ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issuance of microbrewery liquor license number seven, please approach the lectern. Okay, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issuance of microbrewery liquor license number seven, please approach the lectern. All right, there being no one to speak for or against the issuance of microbrewery liquor license number seven, I now declare the public hearing closed. The chair would entertain a motion, by minute action, authorize the issuance of microbrewery liquor license number seven.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, second by Vice Mayor Lutz. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hopkins, and then I'll go back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, I don't really have any opposition to the microbrewery license. There'd probably be a question for you, John. Probably within a couple hundred yards of this place is the Foundation's Early Care and Education Center. A lot of little kids go in there daily. It's preschool. And is there any, anything in the liquor license rule to say we can't put a beer parlor across the street from essentially what's a school?
You know, Councilman, I don't think it would be liquor license laws, but it would be basically zoning laws. And to my knowledge, that would have been examined, but I didn't examine it. I know that. So I don't know, and I'm not even familiar with the school, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
Councilman Cathy.
Yes, I had a question as well, and it may be strictly in terms of what they call one versus the other. But you have said this is going on lots four and six, I believe. And on the application, do I have the right one? No, wrong one. Is it back this way? It says on the application that it's on, there we go. It's on lots three and four.
And actually, I think it was units four and six.
Okay, so units four and six are on lots three and four.
You know, again, we didn't go to the county to look at that, Your Honor, but it was my understanding that those were basically just unit numbers on a structure and not necessarily tied to a particular lot.
Thank you. And it was just pointed out, it does say four and six on the application as well. I had noticed the big asterisks by lot three and four, and so that was what had caught my eye, so, very good.
That is a large building that is divided up into multiple units, numbered units.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the issuance of microbrewery liquor license number four. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, we have five exhibits. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Flur Tremmel to J. Carter Napier dated March 3, 2020. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication is published in the Casper Star Tribune dated March 9, 2020. Exhibit number three, affidavit of website publication is published on the City of Casper website dated March 3, 2020. Exhibit number four, affidavit of notice of conspicuous posting pursuant to Wyoming Statute 12 hyphen 4 hyphen 104A is posted at 117 East Second Street dated March 3, 2020. And exhibit number five, liquor license application filed February 18, 2020.
Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we talked about this during the renewal process, very, very briefly, wherein we were anticipating a renewal application from Brew Story LLC. They have since worked out their lease issues with respect to their landlord and indeed are wishing to continue their successful business at the same address, albeit under a new license, which isn't different from the license that they operated before to conduct their business there on Second Street.
Thank you. Council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issuance of microbrewery liquor license number four, to please approach the lectern. Okay, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issuance of microbrewery liquor license number four, to please approach the lectern. There being no one to speak for or against the issuance of microbrewery liquor license number four, I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair would entertain a motion, by minute action, to authorize the issuance of microbrewery liquor license number four.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Powell, second by Councilman Johnson. Any discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a replat, subdivision agreement, and zone change for the proposed Garden Creek Square Edition Number Two subdivision.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the ordinance just read.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Cathy, second by Councilman Hopkins. Council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
Bill Feringer with CEPI, 6080 Enterprise Drive. We were here, I was here two weeks ago representing the owner and the developers, and we'd like to be answering any questions you might have tonight.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
I don't have any questions. I just say I think we're all well aware that this community is in dire need of increased senior housing in the coming years. And so I would just say thank you to the developer to helping alleviate that need.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask a question.
Councilman Huber.
I'm in favor of this change, but am I correct in understanding that basically that by, because I think this is one of those, it was in one of those planned unit development?
Correct. Yes.
By putting it back into a regular unit category, does that in essence give the city more control over how that's developed? Am I accurate on that, or am I?
That is, that is correct. By putting this into a C2 instead of a PUD, when PUD ordinances are put together, they're approved, and then that's what you've got to follow. And the owners can bring in a multitude of different businesses or?
So this gives the city more rather than less control?
They'll have to come back with more site plan designs and more stipulations.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to wish to speak on this? Okay, discussion amongst council. I'll again be abstaining from this for development purposes. Any amendments? Okay, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With the abstention, abstention of Mayor Frill noted, motion passed.
Please read the ordinance in second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a vacation replat, subdivision agreement, and zone change for the proposed Greenway Park III addition subdivision.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Powell, second by Vice Mayor Lutz. Council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. And I think, did we have Mr. Berland, who's gonna join us? Is he on the line now? Okay, so we'll go ahead and begin with Mr. Don Berland, who is joining us by phone.
Good evening, I'm on the line.
Go ahead, sir.
You're up, Mr. Berland.
Yes, I am, thank you. Okay, thank you. Well, I just wanted to join the meeting telephonically and tell you I'm pleased to be talking with you. We're in the process of wanting to finish what we started, which was in the mid 2000s. We sought to work with the city and others, planning department, the sellers of 62 acres of land, to annex them into the city and zone them and proceeded to do so. Our initial plans were, in the big picture, was to develop a significant portion of the westly part of the 62 acres as apartments. And we have built 296 apartments in the preserve at Greenway Park Phase 1 and Phase 2. They're moderately upscale, relatively new apartments that are, have been well occupied, pretty much always in the 90% range, many times at the upper end of 90% presently because of a little softer market, in the middle to a little bit lower range at times. But it's a bit seasonal where winter times are slower than the summer has, you would expect. The remainder of the land, we anticipated to be developed and as moving from west to east from the apartment area. And of course, initiating or dedicating a good portion of the 62 acres to some open space and roads that we have built, including a cost sharing with the city for all of 21st Street and a water line that's within it. We had planned to develop some progressively less dense land use from some multifamily, including perhaps some townhomes and some twin homes moving from west to east and then towards the east of that, some single-family homes. And that's really what we're continuing to seek to do. Times have changed, of course, since that was annexed. Zoning rules are a little bit, you know, it still supports the PUD type of zoning that we annexed into, which is workable for us. The PUD type of ordinance and processing is not as in vogue now as it had been back then, and has some nuances that are, make it a little more difficult for the city and perhaps for us, or the ultimate builder of the remaining multifamily and single-family alone land. And so the land plan, we're backing up a little bit. There's 32 platted lots in the east and northeast part of the land, plus a significant road lying just to the west of Rustic Ridge and other land plans with significant sized roads. And which is all fine, but the land, the layout of those platted lots and the unplatted land is, as we look at it more in depth and with today's reality and vision and in talking with people who are in the single-family and multifamily, the attached twin homes and other things, who are building in Casper presently, who would potentially be buyers of this land and builders on this land. The lot layout that was envisioned back in 2006 is not very workable. So the new lot layout that some of those local development and sales company of single-family and multifamily properties have input to our consultant, CEPI, CP, CEPI, excuse me, Robin Bill, is reading the foundation of the proposed replating and rezoning you have before you.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Berland? Okay. I was just asking council if they had any questions of you, and it doesn't look like they do.
I think I do, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Councilman Powell.
Mr. Berland, were you, did you have a chance to watch the meeting two weeks ago when we discussed this on first reading and hear some of the concerns of residents of Rustic Ridge? And is there anything you can do to allay their concerns or address some of the things they were worried about as they saw this development occur to the east of their properties?
Yes, I did review those and have a couple of comments. This is not in any organized fashion, but just a bit of recall. You know, we did invest significantly buying land and building 21st Street and other things. Yes, we have a, we're in business, and we have a business motive to sell the remaining land. Perhaps that'll be profitable. Don't think that's a dirty word, shouldn't be. It is a capitalist society, as was mentioned in one of those comments that we live in. There is a need in Casper for more, newer, and better housing, being current codes with today's designs and, oh, some might be one-story, many of it's two-story, that have lots of windows and, you know, different layout for garages. Sometimes helping to deal with people who own recreational vehicles, which is common and important for the lifestyle of people who live in Casper. Those things were really not incorporated in the previous plating. And so it's kind of embracing today's land uses that are being embraced here in this rezoning. There's some concern that was expressed about views. Many of the views in Rustic Ridge will be maintained for the most part, but not in all cases. There's a great difference between the Rustic Ridge land and this land that falls off in some places quite a bit to the west, although the southern portion, which was pointed out by a couple of commentators, may be less of a great differential. But we're really working in the vein of, our land is some value. We have some rights. It's a feasible ownership, just as it was when Rustic Ridge was developed. And the notion that we should not be permitted to do anything more than one-story ownership, that we should be nothing is probably not in the best interest of the city, not in our best interest. And it doesn't assist in a good shepherding of the land and good land use and realizing better housing for the city and for its users.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Berland. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter?
My name is Vicki Primrose, and I'm the president of the HOA. And I'm starting to feel like I know you guys, because I'm here every few weeks. I would like, I know where Ms. Lutz is. She's very clear on where she stands. More homes is better. I don't understand this gentleman. He is saying that they're gonna be, he's a developer, but the way I understand it, he's not really developing it. He's gonna let somebody else sell all these lots. to let somebody else sell all these lots. And I really am in, I'm really not wanting anything more than a single-story home along where Rustic Ridge sits. And I know that you guys as a council can make that recommendation, because if he's going to start putting apartment homes or whatever in there, I don't think anybody would like that in their backyard. And so, I am just voicing my opinion, for what it's worth, but I don't think he's going to be around to develop it because I've never seen the guy. So, I think he's just wanting to make a quick turnover and sell it. And so, I would hope that you guys would give that consent, some consideration.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
To make the record clear, I never said that all I was concerned about was us getting more homes. I think my comments were more along the lines of, he has his right to make a profit as a business owner, just as much as the individual has the right to try to retain their home value.
Just to cut, the last one, the last subdivision, you said, well, we need more homes in this town.
I was talking about senior housing.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah, that's a senior housing project that's near Proffler Street.
I've been nodding about it continuously, I know where he's at.
I didn't nod about more homes.
Thank you.
No other questions? Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter? Okay. Any discussion? All right, any amendments? All right, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With the abstention of Mayor Frill noted, motion passed.
Please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a replat, subdivision agreement and zone change for the proposed Kensington Heights addition number one.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the ordinance just read.
All moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, second by Councilman Bates. Counsel will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Anybody that would like to speak on this?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counsel. My name is Lisa Burridge, 421 South Center Street, Suite 101, here representing Kensington Heights Development LLC. As you probably already know, we recently purchased 50 acres from the previous developer of most of the Centennial Hills subdivision, Peg Ingram. The project before we purchased it was called the Cambridge Heights Edition. This is, we're bringing forward to you the first phase of approximately seven or eight more phases, potentially, depending upon how the economy goes. Our plan includes abandoning the Cambridge Heights subdivision and replating. It also includes abandoning the PUD zoning and asking for a rezone of this particular property. We've worked carefully and closely with the city staff and believe that our development is beneficial for many reasons, not the least of which is wider roads and the abandonment and the removal of this property from the current homeowners association. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak on this matter? Okay, any discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. Oop. Guess I better slow my roll. Okay, please cast your vote. Whoops.
I'm clicking real hard.
Should we all raise our hands?
And please record the vote.
With the abstention of Mayor Frill noted, motion passed.
Okay, notice to liquor licensees of operational minimums. Counsel will now discuss resolution providing notice to liquor licensee of operational minimums. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it will be open for discussion by counsel. Please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution expressing the city's, city council of Casper's intent to better define certain Casper City Code provisions to address the minimal obligations of operational requirements for a commercial retail license, a bar and grill license and a restaurant license.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution just read.
All moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, second by Councilman Cathy. City managers report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is in response to discussion spurned originally, actually previous to the renewals, but certainly taken up during the renewal process as well, wherein some concern with regard to use of the bar and grill licenses and perhaps inconsistent use thereof, as it relates to also, the resolution tries to tackle, I should say, the issue pertaining to hours of operation for retail license holders. Mr. Henley has worked very closely with myself and the mayor and other members of the council to put these thoughts together, and the plan is, pending your formal approval this evening, that indeed, the, you know, the resolution itself would be forwarded to all of the license holders that are, that this applies to and would likely need to be followed up with some level of ordinance passage to assure the authority that this resolution suggests. And with that, Mr. Mayor, if there are any questions, I would probably want to defer to the attorney for some of that other detail.
Your city attorney?
Mayor, city council members, again, this is basically an effort just to make sure that the city licenses actually are utilized as would be envisioned by you when you award these licenses. They have a certain value, certainly two of the types of licenses, retail and bar and grill, are limited just because they're based upon population. So, to have licenses out there that are limited but aren't being used to the maximum extent probably isn't serving the city well, isn't serving the public well, less competition for the public and less sales tax revenue for the city and less traffic in the other areas of town where actually we've seen liquor establishments do quite a bit of, provide quite a bit of assistance to the downtown area. So, in that regard, in our discussions, and we discussed it, of course, at work session, there are some people that just have basically parked some of the retail licenses by not really using them, not trying to make their business even appear often to be open. And with respect to the bar and grill license, it seems, and it seemed in our conversations that a bar and grill license, you at least ought to have a bar, or you're just not complying with one of the basic premises of the license itself. Otherwise, a restaurant license would likely do the individual owner just as well, and it would serve the city better and would be less costly in at least a net out, or an initial outlay and annual outlay for the licensee as well. So, with those, it seems like it could be a potential win-win situation. I understand that people like to hang on to those licenses because they may have some intrinsic value, but at some point, they're only authorized for a year if the people don't want to utilize them to their benefit, to the benefit of the city. And then, we're saying, you're going to have to come face the council when they're up for renewal, you may not get renewed.
So, Ms. City Manager, this is open then to comments by the public?
Mr. Mayor, I would say that it is.
Okay, and then I guess my question is, did we have anybody called in in reference to this one?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. So, is there anybody here that would like to make comments on this issue from the public? Okay, so then we'll move to discussion with counsel. Okay, and?
I will. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Powell.
Some of you weren't here when this took place, but I believe about three years ago, we received another liquor license from the state via the population analysis, and because we only had the one license, we basically allowed individuals to come forward and give presentations to us as to what they would do with the license if it was granted to them. And these proposals that we received were all very impressive, and each one of them involved significant investment in our community to create unique and very inviting establishments. We had to turn down, I believe, five of them and grant the license to one of those proposals, which turned out to be Mr. Huff with the Yellowstone Grill, which is a fine establishment. We'll never know what could have happened had we had access to more licenses. And it's just a shame to see some of these licenses underutilized or not utilized at all, when we have individuals in our community who have great ideas and great business plans and good financial backing to do something much more impressive and much more beneficial to our local economy than some of the licenses that are simply being underutilized or not utilized at all. And so, I'm very supportive of what Mr. Henley has put together here, and I believe we're doing the right thing by holding some of these license holders accountable to utilize a scarce and highly valued resource.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, and then, Mr. or Councilman Hopkins, you'd like to make an amendment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I briefly brought this up in our first meeting, talking about the language that talks about you got to be open 50 weeks a year. And when I got thinking about it, I thought, you know, this is, it's not a significant issue, but it is an issue if you had somebody that had a mom-and-pop liquor license and they wanted to run that liquor license most of the time. And in my amendment, I'm going to ask for 46 weeks, but it's just a situation where it's not likely anymore that we'll have a mom-and-pop liquor license like this with a full liquor license, but they do exist in a lot of cities, where you have a guy that's got a little, you know, 20 by 30 square foot room and he's selling liquor out of it, and that's his whole income. Well, what I'm thinking, if we use and said 50 weeks a year, you got to be open eight hours a day, I guess I'd like to stretch that a little bit because I think our headway here is in the right direction. We want to make sure we don't have part liquor licenses. We want people to be able to make money off of those. So, what I'd like to do is make the following amendment, I would like to, excuse me, I would like to amend the following language in section one, minimal hours of operation paragraph B. This is in your packet on page 340. I would like to amend section B to read, weekly basis means eight hours per day, five days per week for 46 weeks for retail and bar and grill license at the location not owned by the state of Wyoming, Matrona County or the city of Casper, and at least five hours per day, five days per week for 46 weeks per year for the restaurant license. And it really doesn't change the tent much, but it just gives a little flexibility to it, so I would propose that amendment.
So, you making a motion for that?
Yes.
And second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilman Hopkins, second by Vice Mayor Lutz. Any discussion? Councilman Huber.
Well, Mr. Mayor, my only question, and I don't know if there's, is such a thing as an answer to this, but there are small establishments in town that I would certainly put in the category of quote mom-and-pop operations or whatever. I haven't ever noticed any of them that are actively in business, closing for weeks or anything. To me, it doesn't make very much business sense to have a valuable asset, a store and an operation there, and I'm going to close up for a few weeks here or something, you know, but I don't know, is that a problem with any of the current smaller dealers that we know about or anything or?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Huber, as near as I can tell, we don't have operators that close for weeks at a time. We certainly do have, you know, a couple operators right now that, you know, aren't open all that much, but in terms of those that are active and so on and, you know, producing a going concern type business, they generally are going to be open year That helps.
I don't think this is necessarily geared towards them closing, it's the ones that are not open, that are holding liquor license, essentially opening for the minimal amount of time, just essentially parking their license. So, that's what this is geared towards.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, really, I guess, kind of what I'm wondering about is, you know, Councilman Hopkins has proposed this, and he usually always only proposes very learned and wise amendments to things, but I'm just wondering if there's really a reason for it, if that's a solution out there looking for a problem that doesn't exist, or if there's an actual problem in that regard that we should address this way.
If I may.
Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not saying it is a problem, Councilman, but what I am saying is that if we leave it read the way it does, it eliminates the option of having a mom-and-pop arrangement, have to be open 50 days a week, eight hours a day. All I'm saying is if, you know, somebody gets sick and needs to shut their small bar down or ball, small liquor place down, they would not have the option under the current language. This would give them significant options under that, so.
I guess I could even part of an example, if mom and pop go on a two-week vacation on a cruise and they get coronavirus, then, well, essentially, that's.
Too soon.
I don't know, I'm serious. It could happen. Councilman Cathy.
Well, it isn't happening here yet because we're not a big enough tourist attraction yet, but I know, and I'll use another Wyoming city, but Jackson, in the swing months, basically, you go over there in October and you could take a shotgun down Main Street and not hit anybody, and several of the restaurants and establishments closed for a month to six weeks because there is no, no business. And like right now, for example, Jackson, the Big Mountain, Teton Village is closed. They have ended their ski season. So, you can imagine what people are doing now in a place like that. And so, you know, there are circumstances that, and as Mayor Frill mentioned, if you take a cruise and you are a mom and pop, you aren't going to make it in two weeks. So, to a point, the 46 weeks accomplishes what I think this ordinance was meant to try to do, but doesn't penalize the smaller operators that may need to take a couple of weeks off or shut down for a couple or three weeks or even a month to remodel, because that's also what you're doing. If you tried to remodel, you're out of luck because you may not get it done in two weeks. So.
Councilman Powell, did you have a?
I was going to ask Councilman Hopkins the very question that Councilman Huber asked.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion on this amendment? All right, so let's cast a vote on the amendment.
With all members voting aye, motion to amend passed.
Okay, any other amendments? Okay, so on the original resolution, please cast your vote. And please record the vote. Mr. City Manager, we don't need to go into the resolution for emergency proclamation, correct?
Mr. Mayor, I think that issue is not a matter of concern, needing your attention this, tonight.
Right, right. And then, I believe if we're going to pull one of these or. Uh, and then, uh, I believe if we're going to pull one of these or, um, if we're going to pull one of these for discussion, do we need to do that now or after they're read?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest, uh, after they are read and then a motion to consider the amended list of consent items would probably be in order.
Okay.
At that point. And then you go into the discussion pertaining to the item that might be pulled.
Okay. So.
Do we need to suspend rules to be able to pull that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Kathy, I don't think so. I think that's a privilege you enjoy, uh, as a matter of course.
Okay. Please read the resolution by title only.
Uh, item one, procurement of two water storage tank mixers from municipal treatment equipment. Item two, contract for the Paradise Valley to Robertson Road Trail project with HDR Engineering, Inc. Item three, and, uh, agreement for K Street improvements with 71 Construction, Inc. Item four, an agreement for the CY booster station replacement with High Plains Construction, Inc. Item five, an agreement for the Mike Lansing Field parking lot, Storm Sewer with Trito Construction. And item six, the purchase of police radio equipment from Motorola Solutions, Inc.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolutions you just read.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, second by Vice Mayor Lutz. City Manager, would you like to comment on any of these items?
Mr. Mayor, not necessarily on these items, but I would suggest that if we can entertain a couple minute action items tonight that wasn't originally considered when we put the agenda together, I would suggest it would be after you consider the consent resolutions and potentially the singular item that might be removed. Uh, and, and then of course, once you're done with all the consent items going into a potential minute action proposal by one of your colleagues would be in order, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. And then Councilman Kathy.
I would like to move to remove the item 11C2, the Paradise Valley Robertson Road Trail, uh, contract from the consent resolution and have some discussion about that.
Okay. A vote, a motion has been made by Councilman Kathy to remove, uh, the, uh, Paradise Valley Project C2. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bates. Discussion? Or do we need to vote on that for removal of that? Okay. So I have a first and a second. Any discussion on that? Okay. Can I, uh, could you cast your vote? Please record the vote.
With Councilmembers Huber and Johnson voting nay, motion to remove this item pa, uh, passes.
Did I take care of that then, or do we need to have a discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I think now you can move into approving the consent list as amended and see where that takes you. And then, and then I think the conversation with regard to the singular item that's been removed would be appropriate.
Okay. So we'll move forward with, uh, do I have a motion to move forward with the amended list?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Kathy, second by Councilman Johnson. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
Uh, with all members voting aye, motion passed. The consent resolutions passed.
Okay. Now we'll come back to the singular item for the resolution. And do we take that to discussion then? Okay. Discussion. Councilman Kathy.
Well, since I was the one that asked for it to be removed, uh, the main reason that I am concerned about it is not so much the project. I think the project ultimately needs to go forward. However, right now, we are facing, us, going to be facing a severe revenue shortfall. Right now, WTI is in the low 30s. Wyoming sweet is at $23 a barrel. Right now, we are in the middle of a political war between Saudi Arabia and Russia trying to control oil prices and try to, trying to drive the shale producers to stop drilling, which these kinds of prices will do. We don't know what our revenue picture is going to be for the next six months to nine months. Uh, most of what I've been reading is they are not expecting prices to rebound until '21. Right now, Wyoming is at 20 rigs. We lost one last week. There is a good possibility that within the next three weeks, we're going to lose another eight more. What that's doing is this is setting up the same scenario we had in '15, '16, and '17. And my concern is we ought to be watching our dollars very carefully on this spending because I'm not, I'm concerned the 1% 16 may not generate all the revenue we think it's going to generate. We have just been presented with a streets plan that we aren't even funding out of 1% 16, half of the recommended street budget. But I, like I said, I think this is a, something that needs to be done, but I would like to see it delayed for six months. So that's my concern. That's why I wanted this taken off of, off of consent. So I appreciate everybody listening and giving me the vote to hear my piece. Thank you all.
Councilman Powell.
Let's, I, I'll defer to Councilman Hopkins. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I, I understand the concern for our revenue, but it has been on our agenda and on the agenda for 1% 16, uh, in addition to being part of the long-range tran, plant for the trails. If we proceed with an engineering study, um, that's not spending a million dollars. That is just getting the engineering study so we kind of know where we're headed and we can answer the questions for the people that had questions here tonight. Because I really think we've committed to build a trail system as much as we've committed, maybe more so in some cases, to get people to trails and have trail access. And I know we've got street issues to take care of too, but, uh, I, I really believe that we need to at least go ahead with the engineering part of this. That doesn't mean to have, bits have to be left. We're a long ways from letting a bid. And the truth is, I don't know when the schedule, when it was really on the schedule for the trail speed of people's schedule. So it may be towards the end of the period, so.
Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, do, do we know, City Manager, was, was there any plan for them to move forward with any part of this project this summer or would it delay? What, what would it delay, uh, do practically for the plan if we went along with Councilman Kathy's suggestion?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Powell, I, I would suspect that construction activity would, would not be, uh, in play this construction season that we're about to embark in. And so I, 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 I think for all practical purposes, we're, we're probably looking at a fiscal year, uh, 21 construct, 22, excuse me, construction season, meaning next construction season, probably.
Do you think a delay of the sort Councilman Kathy's suggesting would delay the actual ability of the trust to move forward with the project according to their schedule?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, six months from today would put the design to start potentially in September timeframe, give or take. Uh, that, that could delay the implementation of construction, um, as it relates to the next construction season and being able to take advantage of that full allotment of time, if you will. Uh, but, um, I, I don't know if that means that they wouldn't be able to, to get it all done next season or not. Maybe, uh, having the trust come in and visit with us in that kind of a detail might be advisable, given what I know right now.
Just as a follow-up question, you may, may not know, but, uh, the engineering study is often required as part of a grant application process. And I know that the, the primary funding mechanism for this entire project is, I believe, TAP grants and other grants that the trust intends to move forward with. And that, but, but am I right about that, that sometimes they can't apply for the grant unless the engineering study itself is done?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilman, generally speaking, a design has to be put in place in order for the application to be able to move forward so that, you know, the funding bodies know what it is that they're potentially funding.
So as, as a discussion, I guess I could possibly see, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I could possibly see asking the trust for some of those more specific answers to that question, to those questions, but, uh, I am more or less in agreement with Councilman Hopkins that this is money to get the design done. It doesn't necessarily say when the money would be spent or whether the city would have to devote any other additional funds, because it's my understanding, most of this would be grant funded. So.
Councilman Huber.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, and if I might, I, I think we should go forward with this right now, today. Uh, among other things, it is possible that you get some engineers out there working on this and not just slam on engineers, but, uh, you know, uh, they might sit there and look at the whole thing and say, hey, that's a dream that just won't fit in that neighborhood. And so I think we need to get going on it and, uh, and find that out and everything.
Any other discussion?
If I may, as a follow-up, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I think the, the questions we've been asking, we should get answers from the trust regardless of whether we move forward this evening or not. And, and make sure that this engineering study, well, to find out if it is going to hold things up.
Any other discussion? Councilman Bates.
I do want to mention in the packet, it mentioned, um, for the bidding on the construction, uh, putting out the RFP or whatever for construction, those who would do it in October. So it seems like there might be a timeframe that they're scheduled on or not, but that, I, I just noticed that's what it mentioned in the packet was they want to, um, get construction, who they're going to do by, in October, put that out. So I just wanted to point that out.
Any other discussion? All right.
Mr. Mayor, my recollection is, is that these came up for consent. This was removed from consent before the motion was made to approve those consent items. I could be wrong about that, but you may, you may have to have another motion to...
To approve this one?
This and then a second.
I think you're right.
Okay. That's why we have you here. All right. So, motion to approve the removed item. So moved by Councilman Huber. Second?
Second.
By Councilman Hopkins.
Amendments?
Any amendments? Well, any discussion on that? Well, we've had discussion, amendments.
To follow up, uh, with Councilmember Powell's concerns, uh, could we go ahead and postpone this, table this to a date certain, two weeks from now, to allow the trust to come in next Tuesday to discuss the issues that Councilman Powell brought up about timing? Put it back on the agenda in two weeks.
Okay. So an amendment's been made.
I have a motion to table.
What's that?
I think you said to table this. You said amendment, then you said table.
Well, he's making an amendment to it, to table it, to a date certain.
Which, I may have used the wrong word, so...
I think you meant that you wanted to table this.
Yes. That's what I was interested in.
So the motion is to table to a date certain, two weeks from today?
Amendment.
The amendment.
Table the motion.
Is to table the emotion to a date certain, two weeks.
Whatever the appropriate Roberts rules are.
Do I have a motion?
Oh, that guy's back. Sorry, this guy's been trying to get in.
Uh, I, I, I think that you're, you, while you use the word amend, I don't think that you have to move to amend something in order to move to table it. I think what you just want to do is table this so that we can consider it. Uh, and I believe that that's what I heard your motion to be, was a motion to table.
Fair enough. So the motion is to table this to a date certain, two weeks from today.
And I didn't hear a second.
Uh, cause I haven't gotten there yet. So you're making that motion. Do we have a second? Do I have a second? Okay. All right. No second on it? So we'll go back to the original. To approve the motion, or to approve the removed item. Any discussion, any further discussion? Any further amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
I want to make another amendment.
With Councilman Kathy voting nay, motion passed.
Uh, please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Did someone want to make a motion, minute action?
Oh, wait. Minute action, correct. Yes, Councilman Pacheco.
Um, I had to type this up so I could get it. All right. Mayor, I'd like you, uh, like to make a motion to, by minute action, support our city manager and authorize him to make necessary decisions in response to COVID-19.
Motion's been made by Councilman Pacheco. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Kathy. Any discussion? Any amendments? All right. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
All right. At this time, we ask council members to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest. Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really don't have anything tonight, but, uh, I can smell the room is very clean. And I would just, I would just like to, to tell you guys, thank you for, for taking an aggressive stance on this. And I think tonight, what we did and allow you to act quicker is really important in how we control this, so I think we did the right thing. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
No.
Councilman Huber?
I, I would just like to comment, uh, you know, like today, when I was out walking, I saw numerous families and people like that out enjoying the salubrious Wyoming early spring weather and taking advantage of their quality time that I think they can spend together. And, and I would just encourage more people to do that. Uh, also, I cannot help but comment and, uh, and really suggest to people, do not hoard. There is absolutely no reason to hoard, and when you do, you are really doing damage to our community and to your fellow humans and, and that, and that's a, uh, that's really not a constructive thing to do. And the hoarding activity that I've seen in some of the stores, I wanted to walk up to some of these people and frankly ask them, do you even know what you just scooped into your, your cart there? Uh, but, uh, I, I, I think that's something that, uh, that people really need to, uh, not do. The other thing, and I, I know that the city has put out a couple of releases about this, but do not flush anything except toilet paper down your sewer, otherwise it's going to get plugged up and that's going to be a really, really big problem. Even products that say that they are flushable, do not flush them because they do not dissolve and they will plug up the, the, if they don't plug it up in your house, they're going to plug up the city mains and, uh, and that will be a very undesirable thing that will cause some big problems. And so please don't do those things.
Thank you. Councilman Pacheco.
Uh, just a couple things. Um, obviously there are young people out, um, school. I'm sure the chief is probably experiencing some of our young people already out and about. So just be mindful of the young people that are probably taking advantage of the nice weather and doing that stuff and, and so forth. And, and I do, and I know, um, the mayor may have a few statements too, but I would reiterate too, um, you know, that there are people that are vulnerable, that don't have the access to be able to get the supplies and the things that they need. Um, the, you know, whether there's the elderly, the infirm, the sick, whatever it may be, um, to be mindful of that. And, and I guess I'm imploring the community to, to be mindful of the fact that, that when you do take those things and you take multiple items without the thought of other people, um, the insensitivity behind that, that we have to be a community to remain calm and to understand that, uh, we are a community to be able to do those things. Um, we'll get... We'll get through it as we always do, and I'm confident of this city, I'm confident of this council, who I respect immensely. And I am very confident of our city manager and the staff for this city as well. So, those are all the comments I have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bates.
Just a few. Regarding the issue on Indian Paintbrush, what the folks said, I live on Indian Paintbrush, went biking today with my daughters on a four-hour biking down the trails, and they're right. To try to go down Indian Paintbrush, two cars on par both sides, one coming, one going, it's tight. It's a tight fit, and then you add pedestrians in the mix of it, it's a safety concern. So, I know we're going to talk about it, but I just wanted to mention, it is, I live there, I ride my bikes with my three daughters. It is a safety concern, so I just wanted to point that out. Wanted to mention that health department's board meeting, they will not be having people there, but they're going to be doing it virtual via Zoom at 5:30. I'm going to try to tap into that if I can, be in the liaison for that. The CPU was canceled, so there will not be that board meeting going on. Thanks to the businesses all around Casper, taking the initiative of keeping their restaurants clean, keeping their businesses clean, opening up only certain times, trying to help fight this. I got to give credit to all the businesses in Casper to really do their part, so I wanted to say thanks to that. We do got some weather coming, so just, today was nice. We got a storm coming in, so just be, everybody be ready for that. And the last one, Councilman Hopkins and myself was able to go down to the governor's signing for the storm water signing and got that approved, so that was cool to get to go with Hopkins, to be a part of that. And so, I thank you for allowing us to. So, it was neat to see the Capitol redone. We, I've never seen it, so to get to go through and see it redone, that was really cool. So, that's it.
Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to kind of piggyback on what Councilman Pacheco alluded to, we do have a lot of people in our community that are isolated and struggling to get through their days, even on a good day. And I've always prided, I've always spoken highly of this community as a place where people look out for each other. And many people out in the community, many of us, know of individuals that are not in the best of circumstances. And sometimes those folks don't need very much, just somebody to notice them, say good morning, how you doing? Anything I can do to help you out? And we also have family members where maybe there's been some petty conflicts over nothing, and people aren't in communication with each other. This is a really good time to rethink those things and get our priorities straight and have people reach out to each other. If there's anything good that comes with a crisis like this, it helps us understand that most of the things we worry about don't amount to a hill of beans. And for us to really concentrate as a community in reaching out to the people that really don't maybe have the resources that many of us have, and try to help them out, offer to get some supplies for them. But again, sometimes just a simple matter of noticing someone and saying, good morning, how you doing? Can make all the difference in the world when someone's been spending a lot of time by themselves, maybe watching too much TV and worrying more than they need to. And so, let's just all try to redouble our efforts to take care of each other as we go through this.
Councilman Cathy.
The one thing I would like to thank all of you for listening to my conservative opinion on the, on the bridge, thank you all. But, on the bigger scope of things, Councilman Huber alluded to it as well. And what we're really interested in is right now, particularly on these warm days, this is just like the first day of school being out. The kids are out, they are on the streets, they are on their bicycles, and this is going to continue for at least the next three weeks through the sixth and maybe longer. So, let's really, really focus on watching out for those youngsters, and it may get worse with the storm. They may be out trying to sled on the streets and things, so let's be careful and watch out for the kids. That is, that is our future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lutz.
Both Councilman Pacheco and Councilman Powell mentioned it, but we do have a lot of really great agencies in this town that do take care of those individuals who are in need of assistance, so please reach out and look to them. I know that Meals on Wheels is doing their absolute best for, they have a lot of, obviously, individuals who need to be under self-quarantine, and so they are asking for certain supplies that they can take to those individuals. Food for Thought is another one. We have three weeks of kids not being in school where chances are for some of them that that school lunch was their only meal. And so, Food for Thought is, and the school district are both working pretty diligently to make sure that those individuals get food. But if you're looking to help, there are a lot of agencies in town that are helping, so reach out to them.
I guess to add to that, not only the school district, but Boys and Girls Club too, was an outlet for food. I guess just to kind of go with the COVID-19 or coronavirus itself, in the meetings that we've been in, you know, there's a lot of unknowns out there, and this, you know, obviously, we started off months ago and in a different country, it wasn't even a problem, and now it's right here on our doorstep. And as everybody knows, yesterday, we went from, I think, having three in the state to where Lander ended up, now they've got eight over there. And it's just how quickly this can, can spread out of control on us. Discussions that we've had today with, with the county health officials have basically said, you know, it's the social distancing, and you can see it tonight here, that, you know, people spread out and use the space that you have. Doesn't mean that we need to go to the extremes of shutting down restaurants, shutting down businesses. In fact, we don't want that to happen. Just using common sense that, you know, use that distancing and maybe restaurants in town to limit the amount of people that they let in, whether they do reservations and they only let so many people in the restaurant at a time. That's probably the best way of handling this right now. This could rapidly change to where we end up having restaurants that do just takeout or pull up to the curb and not be able to go in and get it, and we could go to the, to the far extreme, but we, we don't know. And so, you know, I would just, the question's been asked several time by restaurateurs here in town that, you know, do I have to shut down? Right now, we're saying no, and, but prepare yourself that if we do get to a point that this does get out of control, and we do, in fact, end up with confirmed cases here, that we may get to a point that you will need to go to Plan B, and they should have Plan B in place, that, you know, you're not closing a business down, but you're certainly going to change the way that you do business, and whether it's meeting somebody on a curve with the order that they called in, then that's what we need to do. But I think every business in town needs to look at it and what's the best way of doing it. And I know that we're taking steps here at the city that if we have vulnerable adults or whatever it might be that are, you know, that don't necessarily need to be here and can work from home, then those are the steps we're taking. So, it's a different world that we're in today. It's rapidly evolving, and, you know, it was said earlier that they felt that we were overreacting. I'd rather overreact, if that's what you want to call it, than underreact because as we were told today, you get one person sick and within a few days, it becomes two. And with a few days after that, two becomes four, four becomes eight, and it just keeps doubling on us. And if we get to a point that we allow it to get that far out of control, then we're going to have a real problem. So, we'll take the measures as they need to be taken as we move forward, but, you know, for right now, business as usual. We just are changing it up a little bit and giving each other a little bit of distance. And no, I didn't wear a green today, but nobody can touch me anyway, so. All right, so that's all I have. We have an executive session? Okay, so there's a notice of an executive session to take place on this date, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session.
Moved by Councilman Huber?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Lutz. And please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
I forgot to tell everybody when the next meeting is, as a matter.